I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics candidate interviews with Don Lutke, Jaclyn Manger, and Ben Wikner, three candidates for the newly created Montgomery County Council District 7. I'm Sunil Das Gupta, host of I Hate Politics. If you are new to the show, I Hate Politics is a podcast about our neighborhoods, workplaces, schools, and streets, and our local governments as they function in diverse democratic and sometimes divided societies. As part of the show, we have conversations with local, state, and sometimes federal candidates. Rather than ask them how they stand on a multitude of issues, these conversations try to get to the character of the candidate. In November 2020, Montgomery County voted to increase the number of district seats in the county council from five to seven, taking the full council from nine to 11 members. Together with the redistricting that followed the new census numbers, Montgomery County has changed its political landscape yet again. The newly drawn District 7 is centered roughly on the northeastern part of the county, around Olney and Damascus, and includes Montgomery Village. Because District 7 is a new seat, it does not have an incumbent. There may be other candidates for this seat, but I was able to speak with Don Lutke, Jaclyn Manger, and Ben Wikner. I will introduce each candidate as their interview comes up. Having three long-form interviews makes for a long episode. The advantage is you get a head-to-head comparison. But if you want to skip around, look in the show notes for timestamps for each candidate. The interviews appear as I recorded them. Music for this episode comes from Emily Hall, a DC singer-songwriter who grew up in Wheaton. You can find her on Instagram at @songsbyemilyhall. First up, Don Lutke is an attorney in the Office of Maryland Attorney General, working on, among other things, training school resource officers and school security officers. She is also the wife of Eric Lutke, the Majority Leader in the Maryland House of Delegates. Don Lutke, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
You said you wanted to talk about public safety. So let me ask, what are the public safety issues in Montgomery County from your point of view today?
From my point of view, it's sort of a couple of different things, different aspects, but they're all interrelated. So first, with respect to public safety as a whole. And when I say public safety, I'm talking about not just law enforcement. I'm also talking about fire and EMS. We have a very large county, both land-wise and population-wise. We have a very diverse county. And we need to make sure that our public safety infrastructure matches the needs of the scope and size of our county. We need to have better partnerships between public safety and crisis response, mobile crisis response, and expand our mobile crisis response. And then certainly within the schools context, I know that is a hot-button issue for everyone with respect to the role of law enforcement in our schools and what their involvement is, was, or could be moving forward. And certainly the broader law enforcement, police reform movement, which the General Assembly passed last year, but gets phased in in different pieces and in different times. And you know, it's not always clear to me that that aspect of it, that phased-in approach to it is understood by the public.
So let's begin with what you first said, is that we have to make sure that our public safety infrastructure meets the needs of the county. Where does it not meet the needs of the county currently?
So I think that in terms of looking at time to response for incidents, you can only go so fast, right? You can only move so far. And you know, this is a related issue, transportation and transit and ability to move ourselves around, right? But then you add into that the need for emergency vehicles or of any kind in order to respond to calls. And as apps like Waze and other driving apps route people off congested roadways and onto smaller side streets where we have residential, you know, densely populated residential areas with on-street parking. If all the traffic from 270 is on the side street, you can't get the ambulance down the street. You can't get the fire truck down the street. So one solution for that and one solution for enhancing the overall posture of law enforcement within our communities is to have additional law enforcement substations throughout the county, not just the district stations, but places where they can work, collaborate with other community organizations, and feel more integrated into the community on a regular basis as opposed to just a call-and-response for emergency service.
Do you see anything more than the physical infrastructure piece?
Yes. So the physical part is one part of it. But as I was saying at the very end of my last response, that integration, by having that additional integration into smaller areas where it's not just a police facility, it's a facility that where law enforcement may have a substation or may have offices that they can go to. But it's integrated with other community services. So for example, that they might have a desk that a patrol officer or two could use or hotel in as they're going around in a particular area, but within a different community organization or where they're co-located on the same property.
Hmm, that's interesting. This is how the SRO program is run, that you know, police officers come to school and spend time there and they have a desk and all of that. So where are you thinking of putting these police officers? In the rec department, anywhere else?
Absolutely. So it could be, you know, at one of the rec centers, right? So like here in Olney we have on, although I know that there's plans for another integration in Olney to help bring more officers here. That is more of the model of what I'm talking about. But that needs to happen in multiple communities and those touchpoints where, so that residents become more familiar with law enforcement overall, particularly in communities where there's a deep need to build trust and restore broken trust, that by having the officers more engaged with the community in a non-emergency response role will help to facilitate building that trust. So that others see law enforcement as something beyond the traditional function.
Sure. But you know, the political climate actually sort of suggests, pushes in the opposite direction, which is to say that, you know, there's a demand to reduce police presence in civil society, so to speak, rather than to increase it. Do you foresee any pushback on this integration aspect?
I think that for those folks who are in the, you know, sort of more in the weeds on public safety issues, that notion of community policing that I'm discussing is the core of the better model, right? Meaning that's what the law enforcement officers should be as opposed to the more militarized view of law enforcement that blossomed in the 90s and onward, right? And so certainly within the law enforcement reform movement, there's been, you know, the hey, we're not going to use or get decommissioned militarized equipment anymore, right? We're taking that away. Or more approaches of when officers can use what we call a soft uniform instead of the traditional, what we traditionally think of, right? It's all have the polo and the khakis instead of a traditional law enforcement uniform, because that's a better approach or a better feel. And it does impact, and little things like that, like the uniform do impact because a civilian may not understand why something is worn. Like why is a load-bearing vest worn, right? Is it because they want to look bulked up? It's actually not. It's actually to help prevent back strain and back problems. And that was something that I didn't know until I engaged in a lot of the work that I currently do now. And I put one on to see what it felt like and the why, and to understand how much the equipment itself weighs that they must wear and why that vest is used to help balance out the load. And if you feel it, it totally makes sense. And then you realize it has nothing to do with looking more aggressive or looking more territorial.
I thought it was Kevlar.
No.
All right. But uniform is one thing. I think the biggest issue is the gun. Do you see a case for a police officer without a gun?
In the United States?
In Maryland, in Montgomery County?
I don't personally, no, I don't.
So if the gun is there, then everything else is sort of deck chairs of the Titanic, no? Uniform or not?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, that's a great question. But I think that also for those who are also seeking to reduce gun violence overall, right? It becomes really hard if you're both advocating law enforcement reform and you're saying, I'd like a less, you know, a less armed presence in my community. But then you have to think about what are the challenges that your community is in fact facing? And so, you know, you can't, you can't put those who are there tasked to enforce the law in harm's way or at a disadvantage when we're talking about a population. You know, the United States as a whole has more guns and gun availability than, you know, virtually anywhere else in the world, so.
Recently, I interviewed State's Attorney John McCarthy, and he made a very strong case that Montgomery County was exceptional, both in terms of, you know, our rates of violence, other crime rates. And so, you know, yes, theoretically, we have to have police officers that are matched with the threat. But if we are talking about having police officers in rec centers, why not without guns?
Because if they get called for a call, they don't have the time to, you know, and this is the issue too, with not just with the Kevlar vests, as you mentioned, right? And when can you, when, do you have time to put plates in? Do you have time to put plates in before you enter a building? If there's a call for a shooter, an active threat? You're again, if you're not having them armed at all times, you're reducing their ability to get to calls to service in a timely fashion.
Okay. So then actually that speaks to what it is you think is the real problem of public safety. And you defined what you did. Do you also see as a problem of public safety the thing that is motivating statewide police reform? Which is, first of all, excessive use of force, excessive use of force against people of color. So you know, that set of issues seems to be at a side in the description that you gave.
No, I mean, one of the other big areas that I work on is hate bias and hate crimes, community outreach and education, and also law enforcement education. I teach police officers about what hate bias is, what hate crimes are, how they're supposed to be reported, how to handle them here in Maryland. Because our state law is different than many other states in that we in Maryland collect information both on incidents of hate bias, which don't rise to the level of criminal conduct and are in fact protected under the First Amendment, as well as those that do rise to the level of criminal conduct. And I, what I see as well.
I was wondering, I mean, I was asking more about, you know, excessive use of force, not.
Yes, but excessive use of force, excessive use of force or disproportionate discipline in the school setting. Or, you know, that's all coming from bias, implicit bias, racially motivated bias. And I'll argue explicit bias in many cases, right? And so as a culture, we have a massive problem with that, with the bias issue. So when I say I go out and I get to talk to people about what hate bias is, certainly there are plenty of communities, communities right here in Montgomery County and all over the state who have felt increased incidence of that, right? Because it has ratcheted up over the past decade. It has increased year after year in our statewide report.
In your view, how serious is the problem of hate bias and implicit bias within law enforcement?
I don't view it as a law enforcement issue. I view it as an American issue, right? This is a cultural thing and there, you know, and it's, there are plenty of.
So there is no difference between social behavior outside of the police department and within the police department? Because statistically, there seems to be a difference.
I think if you look at the disproportionality that you're seeing where they raise, if you're talking about the schools context, for example.
Schools, non-schooled, I mean, you know, the people that are actually, you know, affected.
But I'm going to use that example because in that context, you have both the law enforcement aspect of it where they ask and they raise and argue about student arrests or school-based arrest, which is one piece of it. And then there's disproportionality in school discipline, which is another piece of it.
Correct.
Well, the SROs who are sworn law enforcement have nothing to do with school discipline. They have no ability to discipline a student. They just don't.
Well, theoretically, yes.
They can't. They cannot cause a suspension or an expulsion. They cannot cause a social suspension. They just don't have that authority, but the principal does.
Correct. But it is theoretical, right? The argument that is made on behalf of the SRO model is that the police officer now works hand in glove with the school administration. And now they can better respond to issues, you know, together. So I would assume that, you know, yes, the authority lies with the principal and not with the SRO, obviously. But I, you know, one of the problems that we see in the school system is as a school will, with the presence of an SRO, you know, overuse the SRO.
Right. Then that's a question of are they calling the SRO in to handle de-escalating routine school disciplinary matters that the principal should be handling themselves, right?
They are.
Yeah. No, I agree, they are. But what I'm saying is that's an issue then, right? Ask yourself, why is it that the administrator isn't handling this? And is it happening more often that the administrator is calling in the SRO to deal with students of color where perhaps they don't understand, where they don't want to ask or nobody wants to sit down and say, why is the child having this issue, right? And focus back on the problem solving for that student and why that student is having that concern? And what can we do to support that student, right? Because that's the way that entire law was written. It's supposed to be multidisciplinary. It's supposed to bring in your school counselor and your administrator and your individual with expertise in law enforcement and your expert in classroom instruction. That's all required under Section 71507 of the Education Article.
I think we have to be cognizant in trying to do all of this of what students have themselves said pretty loudly. Their argument is that they don't want, you know, a school resource officer or a community resource officer, you know, there is no need to have a gun in school. It seems that perhaps those demands are not going to be met.
So, right. So, you know, with respect to the student voice, which I think is incredibly vital to all matters of education policy. And certainly the law does not require that there be an SRO in every school. It just doesn't. And there's a lot of, you know, misunderstanding about what is required versus what isn't. But I think what's of paramount importance in a time like this where we've had so many, many things happen since, you know, when everyone left in March of 2020 and then had to re-enter, if you will, in small phases in the spring last year, when some of the kids did go back to school. And then, you know, certainly this fall, we made changes here in the county without compensating for the gap. And not just the gap that would happen because of that change, but the heightened need for additional services and supports for our students and for our teachers. It was promised, but it wasn't delivered. And I think that perhaps a more moderate or phased-in approach would have worked better. And, you know, just like law enforcement officers don't grow on trees and all departments are short-staffed across the country, including MCPD, therapists don't grow on trees, social workers don't grow on trees, right? And we have vast needs for mental and behavioral health supports here in this county, both for our pediatric population and our adult population. We don't have the folks to fill those roles.
What can be done in Montgomery County to address the shortage of police officers?
I think that, and based on the changes and based on the unique situation with that and where we are with that, that has to happen from recruitment level. Like this is about not necessarily recruiting lateral officers from other departments, but more growing new force, new culture, new way of doing things. And trying to incentivize younger folks to get involved.
Just a long-term project, not a short.
Yeah, it's a very long-term project.
What black and brown kid wants to become a police officer? Especially given the image of police officers in his or her community?
Right. But if you don't start doing that community engagement and community relationship building that I'm talking about, you're never going to fill that void.
How do you start? What do you do?
I think you take a look at the resources you already have within those communities within your force to say, what can you do as an ambassador within that community to build additional resources for us? Who would want to come to us? What do you do? Like, do you add on a coaching role, right? You're going to coach in a youth rec league or something like that, right? Because I think that another.
But you're just, you know, but you're adding more to their plate now. It's like, not only do you do police officer, but you become a coach. And are you going to give them time off to become, do coaching?
Well, nobody pays me to work with the Boy Scouts, but I do, right? So you're not.
But it's not just the Boy Scouts, right? This is an institutional issue. I'm sure every police officer who is, you know, black or Hispanic is a strong community activist on their own. That's, I don't, I think, but if you're going to say, for the benefit of the department, now you go coach. So is that, where's the time going to go from?
Not that you're, no, I think you're misinterpreting what I'm saying. You're trying to, you try to encourage that service, right? Service-minded. Some workplaces are better at it than others. You know, not everybody does that, right? Some places will say, well, we'll give you X amount of time to do this activity. Some won't let you do anything. And that's, you know, that's private businesses, government, what have you. It just depends on where you work. And again, that balance, though I said earlier, flexibility is critical to attracting and retaining employees across all sectors.
Have you thought about incentivizing police officers to live in the county?
Yes, because that, much like teaching as well, you want to try to incentivize the workforce to live local. So, you know, whether that could be done through property tax credits or some other sort of a credit where it incentivizes them to come and live and stay, you know? But if they're saying, well, I'm going.
Don't they get property tax credits already, the police officers in Montgomery County? I thought they did.
Thought they might, but the fire EMS do not.
Can you require them to live in the county?
Um, I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I know for certain, not here, but in certain areas, they do require, like if you're a prosecutor, you have to live within the district where you're a prosecutor. Like for example.
Yeah, but the prosecutors usually get paid so much more than the police officer.
I gotta tell you, I think that's, you know, maybe things have changed since when I first was exploring that option. But that much, I mean, to be perfectly candid, like a brand spanking new prosecutor was not, you know, rolling in dough.
Don Lutke, thank you for coming on I Hate Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you.
That's Don Lutke, running for Montgomery County Council District 7. You can find out more about Don Lutke at donlutke.com. And you can follow her on Twitter at PennPENDon96. Jaclyn Manger is a managing director of a research center in the Smith School of Business at the University of Maryland. Prior to that, she was a business executive herself. She's also the wife of former Montgomery County Police Chief Tom Manger. Jaclyn Manger, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thanks, Sunil.
You wanted to talk about economic development in the county. The term economic development means various different things in different locations. For instance, in poor countries, it means poverty alleviation. In other places, it means jobs. And a third place, you know, sometimes it means real estate development. So what is your view of what is economic development itself? Let's start there.
I will say that for me, it is jobs first. But it's complicated, right? There are a lot of other things that we need to do in our county to attract jobs, right? If our goal is to win, let's say, the next time an Amazon competition comes up or some other large employer, if that's the goal. And maybe we'll talk a little more about why I think that maybe that's not necessarily the goal, right? In job creation. But let's say it is. For someone like that, there are other development-related things, let's say, that we need to do as a county to make ourselves attractive for a large employer like that.
Underlying your argument that economic development is primarily jobs and at least as an arrowhead, do you think we have a jobs problem in Montgomery County? What is that jobs problem and why do we have it?
You know, people running for office, people already in political office have focused a lot with respect to jobs, job growth, in a, more like a competition, right? Like compared to our neighbors. And so if we focus in that way, I would say, yes, we have a jobs problem, right? If we want to just look at the statistics and say, other counties, other states, right? It's across the Potomac River in Virginia as well, other municipalities. Um, other municipalities around us are growing jobs where ours are, you know, the statistics show stagnation maybe or maybe loss, right? Um, that's important to focus on, right? Because if we, if we allow that trend to continue, I think it'll be hugely problematic, hugely problematic. You know what we're doing phenomenally well with in my, in, in Montgomery County? Microbusiness. People can go, it's, you know, it's venture forward. People can find it at GoDaddy. It's a really well, well-designed site. If you, if you like the idea of jobs and business and growth and you'll feel proud to be in Montgomery County because you can drill down and see that we're doing well in a bunch of sort of new ways that they're measuring. And what's neat to me as I think about this is they've measured the impact of these businesses in our community. Like, one started on average, that's a founder. They, on average, employ two other people. They lift, over the time they've studied this data, it's the last couple of years, on average, you know, it's US Census data says, you know, household median income goes, went up by a little over $5,000. But in counties that did well with microbusiness, that was over $6,000. Now the delta, there's, you know, only $500, but, but that's impactful when you multiply it over and over again. And what's really cool about this data is what they've shown is a lot of these businesses are being started by women and people of color, right? So I, I, I just think it's a, I like it because it's something positive. It's not in the data that everybody is saying that we're slipping. I don't know that it would profoundly change if we could put the, the data sets together. It would, would make us look better, obviously. Um, and I, I think it's something to think about, right? We could go for an Amazon and get 5,000 new jobs in the county. Or we could think about how are we really supporting and nurturing small businesses in our county? Because if everyone creates two jobs, I need a third of the 5,000, right? It's math, but why couldn't we be nurturing, you know, 1,500 small businesses to create the same impact if we think we have a jobs problem?
How do you get those jobs?
I think we need a multi-pronged approach. One is going after the, the Amazons of the world, but that can't be our focus. And I think for the big employers like that, we have some work to do on our own. You know, people should go back to why we didn't win the last one and look at the reasons-
Why? Explain, yeah, what, why, why did we have that?
I, I think, I think the, the biggest ones were our, was our transportation infrastructure. And I think a little bit of it was our ability to house them and make it through our process to maybe build a new headquarters and make, make it easy for them to establish the business here. That's something else we can talk about because I'm hearing from people from the local chambers and small business people up to large people. Our county needs to, and this is the executive, right? The, the county council can talk about this and fund a government that, and compel the executive to work better on serving our, our business community. But I'm hearing a lot about it's just difficult to get a, through the permitting process. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars more than, than our neighbors in other counties after, just to establish a business and maybe build a physical, small location.
The complaint that Montgomery County, building in Montgomery County is more onerous than building anywhere else is a longstanding, decades-long complaint about which several county councils and several county executives have not been able to do very much. What is your understanding of the problem and how do you fix it?
It's a customer service problem. The county government has to, to be good at customer service. And so if multiple county executives and multiple councils have looked at this and it's a customer service problem, maybe it isn't the way they're organized. Maybe it's the way they're training their employees. Maybe it's accountability.
What should the economic development plan that is focused on jobs do beyond Amazon? What specific steps do you think need to be taken from your point of view?
Smaller business people and startups often just have trouble getting themselves organized. So why don't we have, you know, resources? We've played with this idea of incubators over the course of my time living in the county. Um, I would back county investment in those kind of spaces. Reuse, you know, we could do public-private partnerships in that way. We don't need to necessarily build on county property or build ourselves some places like that. You go out and you talk to real estate owners now that are having trouble filling space because their complaint is we need to create jobs. Well, maybe we just need to start creating a partnership with them to ramp up some space for small businesses to grow. And my thesis actually is that doing the latter, focusing on micro and small and mid-sized businesses that already exist in this county will actually have a more profound impact on our jobs growth than wasting a lot of energy on the Amazons.
Let's talk about um, housing affordability. How do you actually get housing affordability? And I'm, I'm talking about now zoning.
Yeah, yeah. Also not easy, right? So zoning is how, zoning is how you get it. But here's something we, and we need to be really sensitive to. This is something a lot of people up in here in District Seven have given me a lot of, in the year about. This idea of um, taking the existing single-family stock and rezoning to allow duplexes or triplexes or even quadplexes, right? Um, I, nobody that I know of is thinking that that is, that we want to do that as a zoning text amendment for every neighborhood across the whole county. Um, and I, and what I will say out loud is, like, you know, people say, don't, don't back yourself into a corner, say never. I couldn't support that. I couldn't support that. Nope, I'm sorry, couldn't support that. What I would want to do, and where I think the framework wants us to go, is look at the neighborhoods that are, if they're within a mile. Maybe we allow that zoning text amendment only in those neighborhoods. And I still think that's going to be like, whoa, a lot of people are gonna not like that idea because they already live there and they like their single-family neighborhood um, that's within a mile of the, and they like being in a single-family house and being able to walk. And they're like, that's the not-in-my-backyard-ism that I'm not a big fan of. But what I would say is if you move to this county and you share our values, then, you know, sometimes progress, sometimes progress has to happen. Sometimes progress is messy. So there are going to have to be neighborhoods where, where that, those changes logically need to happen. If we all agree that those really compact corridors need to happen. Because it can't be alone, the housing stock can't be alone um, in new builds, right? So part of this idea of development, and I think you could get a lot of low-income housing this way, right? And middle, the missing middle this way is in this lifestyle of, you know, high-rise or mid-rise, um, even closer to, to um, be it metro or, or our arteries around Bus Rapid Transit. So how do we make that happen, though? Um, there's a real tension there. We could zone and, you know, they just passed the bill, right? To entice people to build on the metros. But the, I'm, I'm a realist in that we can't compel developers to build those buildings. And I'm not somebody that's like, th- those people are part of our ecosystem. They're not, so many people, especially people who really hate politics. I'm, you know, people have asked me, are you going to take money from all kinds of people? And I'm like, yeah, I'm not using public financing. I'm taking money from anybody that supports me. And what you need to know now is the only thing that gets them is meetings with me and conversations with me where I synthesize what their needs and desires are with other peoples, right? They don't own me, they haven't bought me. But the developers in our county, if they go to the public market to finance something, and this is getting really wonky, public market financing will make a lot of the kind of projects we probably want to see happen to create affordable housing. Not sustainable financially, right? We can't expect developers to, to change their business model completely because we need the affordable housing stock, right? So I think what we need to examine, and one of the things I've been thinking about, right? We already have the housing, I'm going to get the name wrong, but there's, there's money where we can have public-private partnerships. We just, you know, one was just announced up here in my district-
Housing Opportunities Commission.
Thank you, Housing Opportunities. Um, one was just announced up here to create housing um, for um, seniors, right? Up in the Sandy Spring, Ashton area. Um, so there's, there are mechanisms there, but something I've been thinking about is the Green Bank. Because a lot of these projects too are really, they're being built with the idea of they're going to also have to be green, right? If we push the zoning text amendments in that way, because these big buildings really contribute profoundly to greenhouse gases, right? And so if we want to build concentrated development to fix the housing stock, it's also, you talked about these decisions that one's bad, one's good. Well, the second you build a big building and you don't think about its impact on greenhouse gases, you've now created a problem over here while you've solved a problem in housing, right? So you have to look in both ways. And so I'm thinking, you know, maybe the Green Bank should be expanded because we, if we compel people through zoning text amendment to build these in a certain way while also solving our housing stock problem, wouldn't it be great if they got preferential funding, right, to a Green Bank? We're not giving them money, right? We're putting our skin in the game by loaning them money at a preferential rate by having this bank facility. Eventually, right, if it's, it's truly a bank, we're not going to write off this debt and give this money away to developers, right? We're just going to give them preferential rate and funding. And maybe that's enough to shift and make it enticing.
As you laid out the um, framework of Thrive, you're right. Thrive does not seek to um, remove single-family zoning from the entire county and actually is focused on corridors. That is the politically viable framework. Because that essentially what it's doing is that it is identifying specific neighborhoods and saying, we will give these over to rebuilding while, without angering other people in the county. Right? But the economically sound argument and the more effective argument to bringing housing may, is either that you work the market or you work the social housing angle.
Right, and, and, and you're, you're right. Your thesis is the social, the social, it fits more with this Thrive framework, right? That we need, right? To maybe put our money where our mouth is and be involved in building housing. Yeah, and that's not part of the plan as it's articulated right now at all. And I, you know, looking at where we are financially, we can't afford to do that, right? And it is, it is an evil chicken and the egg, my friend. Because the reality is, is I've been, look, I want to talk about jobs because I'm pragmatic and know we need those to pay for all the quality of life things so many people in this county care about. We can't take even the stuff that we built up and we became known for over the last 30 years or more. That's going to start to slip until we fix the jobs.
So is it your view that corporate and business taxes collected by Montgomery go to support services that are delivered to individuals and families in Montgomery? Or do you think it's taxes that are paid by individuals, including property taxes, that go uh, to support those services? You know, even if you work in Fairfax, but live in Montgomery, you're paying income taxes in Montgomery.
I actually did look at recent numbers. I think it's a little over 50% and individuals pay these, but it's through real estate. Right? The variety of real estate taxes, be that the property tax or there are other layers of real estate tax that are collected every time a house changes hands or et cetera. Um, thankfully not when we just refi, like in the olden days, we get a break on it, on that. Um, but, you know, the, the, all those transaction costs and then the annual property taxes, actually, if you add all of those up, that's more than 50% of what funds our government now. Um, and then, yes, the rest is income tax. And you're absolutely right. That my friend Dolly, that drives from Damascus all the way to Northern Virginia, her income taxes stay here. But, but what's, we've got her money. We've got her money and, 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 you know, her, her, her daughter graduated from Damascus High School. Um, and we're going to continue to use that family's money towards schools and all that stuff. But they're driving, she's driving, is she, how, how much time does she have left over to go, like, take a bike ride on one of the new bike paths that we might be building? That's, you know, connecting one part of our county to the other. Um, it's the quality of life thing. So if you, if your overall goal is to improve everybody's lives, whether, you know, whoever they are, then the jobs thing is, is somewhat about paying for things, right? If we expand jobs and the people do live here who have them or move here to your, you know, we bring people here for them. Obviously, the income taxes will go up and that's, that's helpful. Um, and to the argument that on the margin, we will increase the housing stock, there's going to be more in the other pot too, right? To fund things. Um, I think part of it also, though, is the quality of life. That, and there's no money, that, that's not about money. That's about, do we believe in this holistic approach to how we govern? How we um, how we guide policy, whether it be zoning text amendments or bills? How we use our own money to, to guide a future way that people are living? Right, right, through policymaking? Not all of it has to do with how we're spending our money.
Jaclyn Manger, thank you for coming on I Hit Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you, Sunil. I appreciate it.
That's Jaclyn Manger, running for Montgomery County Council District Seven. You can find out more about Jaclyn Manger at mangerformontgomery.com and follow her on LinkedIn. Ben Wickner is a minister and pastor in Montgomery Village, where he founded a food distribution center at the start of the pandemic. The center has grown dramatically to include other services and now even tax filing assistance. Ben Wickner, welcome to I Hit Politics.
Thank you. Very glad to be here with you.
What is the Montgomery Village Resource Center Equity Center that you set up?
Yeah, so, um, Gaithersburg Elementary School, the principal came to us early in the pandemic um, and reached out and said, we're, we're really suffering. Uh, this pandemic is hitting our community hard. And we'd already been, my church had been uh, active and involved in the community. What can you do to help us? And so we responded uh, with like, what do we, what's the big need right now? What, what can we do? And so we're like, well, the food is the big need. And so we started doing food distributions uh, with no background, no experience uh, of supply chain or anything else. And we became one of the largest, if not the largest, single site in Montgomery County within three to four months. And um, which causes its own challenges, by the way. We're operating out of Lake Forest Mall as well as Gaithersburg Middle School. And so uh, we were doing this on a weekly basis, uh, moving um, tens of thousands of pounds of, of donated as well as purchased food uh, to meet the needs of the community. And um, it was a real privilege to do that. I had 40 to 50, sometimes 60 volunteers serving and uh, just a real movement of the community. And so uh, late in 2020, the county came to me and said, hey, we appreciate the work that you're doing in Montgomery Village and in Gaithersburg, uh, meeting the needs there. We, we see what you've organized. We need help. We need help in meeting the needs there. Would you, can you help us to uh, to meet the needs? Because we're, we're not able to with the present infrastructure. And we're like, absolutely, we'll, we'll do what we can.
So when you started, where did you get the food, which is your first entry point?
We clawed out partnerships and built them from scratch with Coastal Sunbelt Foods, with Sweet Seasons, uh, with the Montgomery Food Task Force, uh, with um, uh, Manah Food with, with. And then, once you got in the network, all of these other organizations said, hey, how can we help? What can we do? And we just created a logistical machine that was able to, to continue to serve. Oh, Sam's Club is another. I mean, it's just, it's just wonderful how people are giving. And part of the benefits, Sunil, is that so much of this food would be, because it's secondhand. It would be discarded in the landfill because the date has expired or because it's not perfect in some way. And so we, our, our infrastructure takes the food and then redistributes it to people who need it. And we're keeping their costs down, we're feeding hungry people. But also with it now with uh, inflation and things skyrocketing- But also with it now with uh inflation and things skyrocketing, it's really helping to meet their bottom line.
So apart from food, taxes, baby supplies, is there other things you do like workforce development?
We do workforce development. One of the ways that we do that is we seek to hire from the community. We call them Community Jedis. Uh Jedi stands for justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. And so in order to help people to uh have professional skills, uh career development, um to get into the network of of uh job and uh professional improvement, uh one good way is to hire them and train them. And so we hire from the community that we serve. And so my staff is from the community, they they have the shared experience. Part of my job is to uh mentor them, to develop them, to open up the doors of opportunity for them. But they then in turn uh give us incredible trust, relationship and access to uh the community uh to be able to serve them, because there's a lot of lack of trust here. There's a lot of um people in the uh these hard hit communities that they just, they're, they've struggled for a long time, uh they've run into every barrier uh possible. And they've been taken advantage of, they're they're they're, they are vulnerable. And so they understandably, they mistrust. They they don't believe what government and nonprofits and what people say, especially people who are uh who seem to have things together, you know, or or are successful. And so we've been able to really to serve this community effectively by uh having access to people who are already trusted.
How many people do you hire?
Uh, in the last year, I've hired ten people. Right now, we have uh seven people on staff, I believe. And uh, um, yeah, we're a small outfit, we're a small organization.
Who supports the salaries for the for your staff?
We are primarily funded through private foundations, uh through benefit organizations, through grant making organizations. Uh, we have a tremendous partnership with Holy Cross Health, they are fantastic. Uh, we're supported by Health Initiative Foundation. They are are wonderful people who are doing great work. You know, just organizations like that that uh support us who are on the ground in order to get the work done.
So I'm actually trying to get to um what is the level of public support versus what's the level of private support? Um, you know, where's the balance?
Yeah, I don't, well, I'm just going to be candid with you, Sunil. Um, one of the reasons why I'm running uh despite the fact that I I don't have a political background is I think ordinary people do need to step up and in order to be able to make a difference, you know. I if if you want to see the change, I I believe you have to be willing to be the change. And uh, and there is a cost that comes with that. But in, you know, over the course of the last few years, we've, we've had a lot of um interactions with the county. And and again, just to be very honest with you, some of them have been very challenging interactions. Uh, uh, running up against the bureaucracy, running up against things which just don't make sense. And and I think have lacked leadership, lacked vision, uh lacked even common sense. And so um, part of why I'm running is is is, okay, well, if I I don't want to just sit on the sidelines and be frustrated. I I'd rather be willing to enter into the arena and try to be a difference maker.
So what kind of challenging interactions can you give me some examples?
Sure, um, well, let's just take the VIDA work.
Yeah.
You know, understandably, we're looking for help in doing this work and uh uh the county, uh we're we're the seventeenth wealthiest county in America. Uh, our county executive recently put out a proposed budget of six point three billion dollars. Money is not our problem, it's the use of that money. It's the strategic, smart, uh efficient use of that money and effective use of that money. And so uh as an example, so I I had multiple conversations with uh uh people in the county government uh to fund our work, to help us, because again, uh this was going to be a very powerful means of of financial empowerment, of uh social and civic improvement. Uh, this is something that that helps everybody, okay? And especially those who are struggling. And all of the the stars were aligned to to make it very powerful. I we saw that and we're like, okay, let's let's move it, let's get it done. And VIDA is something that our county has been involved in for, I think, twenty five years. So this is not a new program for our county. Um, however, as uh one council member said in a little YouTube snippet, there's now more than thirty eight thousand newly eligible in the county for the the local EITC. So smartly, our county found uh funded the WFIS for forty five million dollars over three years. Forty five million dollars, which is, listen, celebrating that, uh high fiving that. And so uh, all right, we now have forty five million allocated to fund these eligible people, uh low income earners uh for the EITC, the WFIS. Now we need to let them know that they're eligible. Now we need to set up the infrastructure to be able to help them. But the county, despite all of my pleas, despite all of my advocacy, despite all of our uh effort to try to fund the outreach, to fund the building of the infrastructure, did not help us at all or anybody else. We're the only new VIDA site in Montgomery County, even though there are more than thirty eight thousand newly eligible for the EITC. That's a problem, okay? And if you're going to fund something to the tune of forty five million dollars, then you should spend at least a few thousand dollars to build the infrastructure so that people can actually access that money. That's called smart government, that's what we need. And that's what we have to do, we have, and there are many other examples of this, but this is happens to be one that's very close to my heart and to my experience.
How much money were you looking for and how and you did not get?
I had asked for uh very clearly, um, it was eighty seven thousand dollars.
To cover what, training for VIDA?
To cover uh some salaries, so if we could have, so instead of just having volunteers, we could also have pay for some staff to be able to do it full time in order to be able to uh up our capability, uh to be able to pay for, yeah, some of the training and um just, you know, and some of the 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 basic necessities to be able to build this program from scratch. Uh, some of the software and technology and things of that nature.
Clearly, you are appreciative of the fact that they funded um a local EITC, but they didn't fund the outreach, as you pointed out. So what is it about government that does one but not the other?
I think I can answer that question with concrete and a concrete example, okay? I was told multiple times, uh despite the fact that everyone said to me, we love what you're doing, we agree with it, it it's a priority, we need to have this vital work, we gotta support it, blah, 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 you know, and then and no uh actual support. But but the kind of the other side, which I don't know if this was an excuse, I don't know if this was rationale, but it was, oh, but what we are doing is we are, we're investing in the three one one um program, uh outreach program. And we're putting three one one uh placards on ride on buses and and we're really making a big deal of the the whole three one one program. And 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 I I heard this multiple times that this was the solution. Now, here's the disconnect, Sunil. The disconnect is that people in county government think that the three one one system is an effective way of outreach. That is ridiculous, okay? And in saying that, I applaud the three one one system. I'm I'm glad that it's there, I'm sure it's accomplishing some good. But to think that that is going to reach the people who actually are are in need of the program and who are actually going to be able to benefit from the forty five million dollars, that's what the joke is, okay? It is a disconnect. Now, one can, you know, one can, I suppose, consider, why? What what what's happening there? Why why that disconnect? Well, I, that's a whole nother discussion, but the point is, it's a bad disconnect. People need to to get a better sense of reality. And in order to have the better sense of reality, they need to walk in this community. They actually need to talk to the people who that forty five million dollars needs to goes to. And I can promise you, they are not, that is not going to reach them. The three one one system is not going to reach them.
When you talk about disconnect and when you say that they, you know, they're not doing the right outreach, I agree with you, I a hundred percent agree, three one one is not the way to do it. But they, but it's not like they're entirely disconnected. And that they do feel the need to appropriate the money. The money is actually appropriated and distributed, perhaps not efficiently in the way that you want. But and so the paradox to me of leadership in the county is that you get some things right and you get some things wrong. What are the things you get right? What are the things you get wrong? And how do we distinguish between?
So I feel like, Sunil, you're fishing for trouble, which I appreciate because you're a podcast uh and you gotta have good, good podcasts here. And I I'm not, so I'm not, I'm not saying that to be pejorative, but but uh I'm a truth teller, I'm a truth speaker. And so if this gets me into trouble, so be it. But um, it has been said to me, I don't personally believe this, I don't, I hope this is not true. But one can, certainly the question has been posed, that if you're going to put out forty five million dollars, but then not put out substantive money to reach out, one wonders, do you really believe in in what you are um proposing? Okay, and people ask those questions because it's an honest question. It's like, if you're really going to say, let's help the low income earners and let's really help those who are struggling. And so, hey, let's have a big splash by by uh doing this good deed, but then not actually put wheels on the car. So in other words, if you buy the car, but you don't put wheels on the car, do you really want to drive? Okay, now, no, some people aren't going to want to hear that. And again, I don't, I'm not saying that I believe that. But I have heard, even my wife has said to me, Ben, it is almost criminal that more is not being done to help this community when it, when the opportunity is right in front of us. That's strong. And my wife is one of the gentlest, kindest, sweetest, soft spoken people. But you 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 do hear the strength of this. And so that's why I, that's why I think you're fishing for some trouble here, but.
Well, I'm not exactly fishing for trouble, I'm trying to get to cause. And you know, you're running to fix a problem. In order to fix a problem, you have to understand cause, right? And so I'm trying to get to your sense of the causation here. Because it's, it's one thing to diagnose the problem, another thing to understand causation, and a third thing to fix it.
So let me give you another, what could be an answer to your cause? Because I truly believe that the people who are presently in office, I think they're good people. I think they have good hearts. I I personally like them, okay? I personally think we need some substantive changes in leadership too, okay? But uh but again, I think they mean well. But here's an example of what could be an answer to your question. Also, in twenty twenty one, not that long after the decision to uh um set aside forty five million dollars to to support low income earners through the WFIS, the county council made a big splash by uh appropriating a pilot program for uh our version of a UBI, Universal Basic Income. I imagine you know what I'm talking about, okay? Big press conference, uh you know, big splash, uh, hey, this is great. We're, this is a private, public funding kind of thing. We're gonna, we're gonna help three hundred people on this private program. We're gonna model ourselves after this program in California, this is fantastic. We're, and and look at us. Here's the thing, Sunil. While I support UBI, I think there's a lot to commend there. We just put another program, another splashy program, another, we just bought another sexy car that's very expensive and it's going to require a whole new set of bureaucracy, it's going to a whole new set of learning, a whole new set of staffing, a whole new set of costs, when we've already funded forty five million to serve this community. And we already have a program that's twenty five years old that knows how to run it. We should have been supporting that because we've been doing that for twenty five years.
Is it your view that we have too many pilot programs and not enough sustained um support for the successful ones?
What I have heard from very frustrated members of our county and community is that there are so many well meaning programs in this county that it's dizzying. They cannot keep track of it, they don't know how to access most of them. And the ones that they hear become big are so hard, uh they're just, they're not effective. They're not, they're not being invested in. So just as an example, one I heard just recently was uh some some complaints by the folks over at Cider Mill Apartments. Uh, it's an HOC complex and uh people, uh demographically, some of the most struggling people in our county, okay? Historically and still presently. And uh people who are, have dealt with the rental challenges at the very forefront. They're the tip of the spear of of uh struggling in that way. And so our county has all of these rent um rental help assistance, right? All this money that is available, and it is very difficult to access that money. And so the investment, so the money is there again, but the investment, the outreach, the um the stewarding of the program, the execution of the program has been less than effective and satisfactory. And the people in the community are frustrated because they know the money's there, but it's not actually helping the community substantively. So I actually heard that just uh in the past week. And so I think that's another example of what we're talking about.
If you were to win, how would you change it? How do you think you can change it? Consider that you're going to have to make a bureaucracy do it, you can't do it yourself. Second, you're one of eleven going to be, right? So give me a theory, give me a pathway to how you will succeed in the changes that you want to see.
So your question may reminded me of something that uh that exists in the Bible. Uh, one thing that that Jesus said in his many teachings was that uh no one starts a war without considering how many soldiers he has, right? And nobody builds a tower or a building without considering how much it's going to cost and what it's going to take to do it. And I think to your point, Sunil, our county is building things and then not finishing them or is putting together great plans with really good intentions, but not executing effectively. And so do I see myself as somebody who's going to come and fix everything? No, listen, I'm one person, I am uh, I'm a regular guy. But I will tell you this, uh I have a proven track record of getting things done, of building creative, innovative, um effective ways to solve problems. Yeah, I've been doing that in our community and as a nonprofit and in leading these smaller organizations. Can I uh translate that into a highly bureaucratic and much larger uh county government? I hope so.
Ben Wikner, thank you for coming on I Hit Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you, Sunil, I appreciate it. Have a great day, man.
That's Ben Wikner, running for Montgomery County Council District Seven. You can find out more about Ben Wikner at benwickner.com and you can follow him on Twitter at Ben for Council. That's all for this episode. Music for this episode comes from DC based singer songwriter Emily Hall. I hope you will listen, like and share the show as we bring you stories about politics close to you and your home. See you next time. See you next time.